The existing front porch is shown with a note as being converted into existing dwell in the area is shown as a bookrooms?
Yeah, that's part of the architectural that we're revising.
Okay. Lighting, if there's going to be any lighting on the site, we recommend you have your normal requirement, the 0.1-foot candles and no glare at the property lines.
Yeah, I want to really adhere to that because there's residents that you come up, Scunny Monk, past Apple Hill. They are not 0.1 lighting, and I don't know who to go to on that because they shine so brightly that they're blinding. I want to make sure that this pie-shaped corner is adhering to those lights.
What you can do is if you use LED lights, they have a clear cutoff right at the line, and you can use recess fixtures. It depends what you're going to propose to do.
Yeah, I think, I don't know the exact fixture we propose, but probably.
That's a Gary one.
Yeah, it's an LED.
Yeah, the little is your sign. What is that noise? Anything else, Dennis?
The only other thing is, this is subject to ARB and Ridge Preservation, considering its height. The structure already, well, it's subject to ARB and the Ridge Preservation. There's a retaining wall that's proposed on here, a seven-foot-high retaining wall. That will have some architectural impacts. I don't know what the intent is for finishing that wall, but a plain concrete wall in an area like this might not be appropriate. Maybe it needs a form liner, or I don't know, is it concrete or segmental block?
I propose segmental block.
Yeah, well, segmental block would provide some texture and some finish, and you'd want to take a look at the color and make sure it's appropriate. And other than that, this requires, subject to public hearing, we said, GML requirements have to be, have they been sent?
They were sent out, they were sent out in October, and we got responses back in November.
But it's not ready to schedule a public hearing, just needs one, and the applicant wants to submit.
Since the plans have been changed, do we have to resubmit to GML? Actually, what does David Church's office say? We remind the board that aside from comprehensive, we remind the board that aside from comprehensive plan changes and adoption slash amendment of local laws or zoning ordinance, only full statements of the following that meet the above geographic criteria must be referred for individual developments. So it's really, so they're looking forward to reviewing future projects, but not this one. They don't say that this is, it's weird the way he wrote this one. It's, oops, sorry. I'm getting lazy now. And the DPW, there's no impact on the county road or county-owned property. That was from November 9. We're having a sidebar right now.
Well, that's 500 feet from what the, from adjacent property. Is that GML? No. But they're on a county road. Is this Scunny Monk?
What's that?
County here?
Scunny Monk is not there because Village takes care of the road.
No, it's all local.
It's all local.
What the county planning department is saying is that they don't believe that it's within any of the triggers that require a GML 239 referral because Scunny Monk Road there is not a county road, it's a village road, and therefore, they don't need to review it at all. So therefore, even though it has been changed, there's no need to re-refer it at this point.
Copy. All right. Dennis, you're finished with your report?
Yeah, there were some other items in there, but I think those are matters for John to consider, and he's going to amend the plans. I think he can incorporate those corrections. If anything carries on, then we'll discuss it at the next meeting. Unless you have any questions.
Well, I'm going to jump to Rick. Because I'm going to ask you about these waivers. As a board, the two waiver requests, just to explain it for the board members, how do we handle that?
Okay, it's a good question. This is something unique. Normally, these deficiencies in bulk requirements require a variance from the ZBA. There is a provision, however, that is unique to religious uses, that says that this board can waive those bulk requirements to whatever degree you believe necessary, but not waive it willy-nilly. It's waiving it if you believe that to have them adhere to the bulk requirements would place a substantial burden on the exercise of their religion. All right, so that's your standard, whether or not you believe either or both of these, if enforced, would place a substantial burden on the exercise of their religion. Now, I think that one of the things that the courts say is that if they cannot operate at all, that's almost a per se substantial burden, because if they can't exercise their religion at all because they're completely shut out, then that would be a substantial burden. On that basis, I think that the lot area, which is also a fairly slight bulk requirement deficiency from .94 to 1 acre, probably fits into that category. So under the standard and under the, how the courts look at this, I believe that it would probably be appropriate for this board to go ahead and waive the lot area bulk requirement, given the fact that if you don't waive that, they can't exercise their religion at all. I think the lot coverage is much more difficult to determine whether or not it ought to be waived by you, and it's within your discretion whether or not to do so. It's whether or not you believe that the lot coverage, which is three times more than the amount allowed, more than three times more than you amount allowed, that if it's not granted, that it would place a substantial burden on the religion. In other words, if you held them to the 10%, which is what is required under the bulk code, that it would be a substantial burden on the exercise of their religion, or whether or not they could still exercise their religious preference on this lot, they would just have to alter it in order to go ahead and comply with the zone. They would, if that was your conclusion, they would then need to go and have the right, they would have the right to go to the ZBA to ask for a traditional variance from that, an area variance from that, and say, I want an area variance from the lot coverage. And they would present their case to the ZBA based upon the traditional reasons why anybody could go and get a variance from a bulk requirement. So that's my advice, my general advice to you. I can answer any questions that you want. We did receive a letter from their attorney, apparently, dated today.
We didn't.
Excuse me?
We didn't.
It was in my package.
It might have just come in this evening. I picked up my mail this morning.
It was in the mail that I just picked up in my?
I just picked up the mail, too.
No, I didn't formally submit it yet. I received it today. I didn't submit it because I know.
It was received by the building, it's dated today, and received marked by the Woodbury Building Department today.
I got it in my mail.
I guess the applicant's attorney submitted it.
No, that's something different.
Oh, this is a different, that's a different one.
Oh, I'm sorry, I take that back. Okay, I'm not sure.
That's the other one.
Yeah, my mistake, my mistake. So I don't, you said that there was a recent, there was a letter from the attorney that addressed this?
I just got, I got basically the draft today from the applicant's attorney. I didn't submit it because there'd be no time for you to review it.
Okay, this is the one that, this is the one you said you were going to provide at the last meeting?
Correct.
Okay, so we haven't, we haven't gotten that.
Correct.
The, so we'll see, I guess, what that letter has. I don't think that this is ready for a public hearing for several reasons, but one of them is, there's an essential issue as to whether or not you would be granting those waivers for a substantial burden on a religious exercise. If the applicant's attorney is sending a letter addressing those issues, I suggest that you hold off making that determination, and we can review that, and I can give you advice with respect to, if my advice changes at all based upon his letter, but my general advice, I think, is going to probably remain the same. But we can wait to see what they say.
If I could just touch upon that, the development coverage is basically the function of the parking. And so in this case, we're meeting the Village Code's parking requirements, and in turn, our development coverage is going up.
Right, but that, all that says?
But if we did the opposite and not, and lowered the development coverage, then we wouldn't meet the parking requirements, so.
So you'd need a variance either way, I understand that.
Or a waiver either way.
Right, but the question is, on waiver, it's not just waiving it because you need it.
No, I know that.
It's a waiver because they believe that if they don't waive it, you won't be able to exercise the right of religious exercise.
Well, they wouldn't.
You won't be able to participate in your religious exercise because of the failure of the planning board to waive it. You would be able to, if for nothing else, to exhaust your administrative remedies, have to go to the ZBA in any event if they didn't waive it. But that's my advice to the board. They had to make a determination whether or not this particular waiver of lot coverage, or if it was turned around, the lack of parking, would place a substantial burden in the exercise of the religion. It may be, let's, let's put it in sort of an extreme so that you can understand it. Let's say that the, they fell one parking spot short of what's required under the code, right? For this board to say, no, you can't have that because of the lot coverage, may mean that they have to make some other adjustments. And if they make some other adjustments, that may not prevent them from exercising their religion. They may have to adjust, ask for a variance from the ZBA, and part of the condition would be that they would have, have to put some kind of restriction on how often they have services or something. That's not necessarily a substantial burden on the exercise of religion. Again, I'm just talking hypothetically. So it's not a waiver in the traditional sense that you normally have waivers on where it's a hard, economic hardship or something, and you have to make the determination based upon that standard. Whenever you have a waiver, there ought to be a standard that you weigh your waiver against. It's not an unbridled discretion to issue waivers. Here, it's whether or not it's a substantial burden on the exercise of their religion if you fail to grant them the variance from the bulk table. So that's what you should be thinking about, just thinking about what is their exercise religion? Is this lot coverage something that if you weren't granting it and they had to somehow reduce the size of their use, would that be a substantial burden? There's no fine lines and clear lines of demarcation on these things. So you have to think about it and then give a reasoned determination as to whether or not you're going to grant or deny the variance. And if you don't grant the variance, they do have the option of going to the ZBA and asking for a traditional area variance, just like anybody else would if it was a commercial operation or a residential operation that needed a variance on the lot coverage.
Okay.
We also, there'll be a condition, just not on that issue. There'll be, need a will-serv letter from the Village of Kirisjol with respect to, that they'll be served for the, I guess it's sewer?
That's water.
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 Water. And that's it?
All right, thank you. I'm just going to, I have a question. ESO-related. I'm looking at this property right now, and I see the extension of the seven-foot retaining wall. The backyard, which has the parking, and the main entrance, which is on the side. How is a fire truck going to go in there if there's a car fire safely? And how is, if the back of the house is on fire, how is a fire, they're going to have to work the fire from the road because they're not going to be able to get past that seven-foot retaining wall? So that's something that we're going to have to ask the ESOs to really look at, because I'm looking at this, retaining wall is only 10 feet or 18 feet away from the back of the corner of the house, and it's around, so Jesus, that's just, I'm looking at this, and that's a concern that I think, Dennis, we're going to have to bring the fire department in to look at that. And Chris?
Just to clarify, the seven-foot height is mainly in the back here. It tells that at this point here, it's only a foot and a half.
All right, then, you need to mark that for me so I understand that. Okay?
Yeah, the TW top and the bottom.
Okay.
But if you want the comments from the ESOs, we can ask them for their comments.
Yes, because, yes, I need, I need to look at that because from the road going upwards, we're looking at 16 feet from the road about to the back where the corner parking lot, the last parking spot. So it's on a little uprise of 14 feet or more, and I want to make sure safety-wise, especially for the firemen, how are they going to get to the back of that building quickly and safely with all those impediments there? Signs, I want to be quite assured when having the resolution, the handicap parking signs and, you know, arrows or whatever on the pavement, that there are no additional signs saying that this is whatever they're calling the shul, that they're, I want to be.
At this time, no.
Okay. I want to be quite clear, and that's my opinion, I don't know what the rest of the board feels. It is a residential area, and I know, there really shouldn't be a sign in the corner or anywhere with it that says, this is the shul. Because we have to be respectful for all residents that are living up in this area that are not going to be using the shul, you know, driving by and all that. So I want to be respectful to everybody that's living in this area. And what I'm concerned about, because I've been up there, especially in the summertime, when they park on Scunny Monk, coming up over from the reservoir end, they park on the road such that if a fire vehicle had to get through there, it's almost blocking the road. I can drive decently, but when cars are parked on both sides of the roads and I'm narrowed down to going down the middle of the road and making sure windows, you know, side view mirrors don't come off, I'm really concerned that the parking might not be enough because I'm not sure of the intense use during the week other than a Sabbath. These are, these are my concerns, because I have a friend that lives up there, and I go up there quite frequently during the summertime and spring, and it's constantly cars parked up there. And I'm sure when we go to public hearing, we'll hear from residents in that area. The lighting I discussed, the water Rick discussed, just give me one second, I had another note, but I can't find it. And the waivers, I'm, I'm going to let the board members talk about that because I'm having, and it's strictly mikvah, shul, training, bookrooms, and no one's going to live in there at all.
No.
Okay. Who wants to take this first? Robert?
I had a question for Dennis. Dennis, you had some sort of concern about the entrance, the main entrance to the building location, or concerned about that?
Yeah, just where it is. Is the main entrance in the rear?
It's on the side.
It's on the side.
Okay, so that's being changed?
It's right here.
So people are going to park on an L-side, L-shaped, and then come around?
Well, there's a two, this is the main entrance for the shul, and the entrance for the mikvah is on this side.
So there's two entrances?
There's a basement entrance, which is on the lower side, which is this side, and then there's the main entrance.
And what happens with the covered porch in the front?
That's what we're doing with the architectural right now. I wish it would remain, but we don't think it's possible to include it.
Can I answer your questions?
Yes.
It's up in the air a little.
Is there any concern about evacuation in case of a fire?
Well, there are requirements for occupancy and for the size of doors and that sort of thing. They're going to have to comply with the building codes still. So whether it's a double door, whether it's a number of doors, it depends, and that's how you set some of your occupancy limits. It's not my field, it's Gary's, and that's, that's what they'd have to do.
So the location where they're proposing, would it cause any problems as far as evacuation?
I really didn't look at that, I'm.
See, this is something that we talk about, but we don't know, because we say it's Gary's purview as a building inspector, and we don't understand, all of us don't understand it, not most of us, or, and that's where we need to be educated, maybe from Gary, to let us know.
But I don't know that that's.
Just so we have an understanding.
Yeah, okay. Well, all I can say is that they're, they're, they're going to be required to comply with the building codes. And Gary's going to look at that.
Yeah, because he would have to say, but, I know what you're saying, educational-wise, I don't know what the answer is. Maybe Gary can give us some kind of a short synopsis.
Yeah, it's, it's not a clear-cut answer either, because it depends on the occupancy, the type of construction, you know, the, what your total square footage is, and then based on, so it's like a whole tiered tree, and it's, it's complicated at the end.
Anything else?
No, that's it.
Chris?
A couple links. On the EAF Part Two, with number, question number five, will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic, existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking, or walking? Right now, it's listed as a no or small impact may occur. Based on the street's lack of sidewalks, lack of street lighting, potentially 72 congregants, because I believe that's the maximum.
The number.
Number, that's, so, I'm looking at it potentially, there's 72 people in there once, all getting out of service, and exiting into a, what would be a major thoroughfare up there. How is that not considered a large impact, being there's no real pedestrian rights of way up there?
Kelly, put that arrow there for us to look at that. You see that little side arrow?
Yeah, I figure that's what that was for, but.
Well, no, the side arrow means that it's little rather than none. That's all that means. But that Part Two that Kelly prepared for you, these are what she suggests might be your responses, right? That's all it is. You haven't gone through that yet, so you can go through that, and you can change that to large. You can, I mean, you, we can give you some guidance as to what SECA determines to be sort of a large impact with respect to traffic, and you may be surprised at what they consider to be a large impact. But we can go through that with you, but you haven't really gone through that yet. I think actually, the only thing you should do with respect to SECA at this time is that you can assume lead agency. But I would say that you postpone for now the issue of going through that Part Two of the EAF prior to making your determination of significance, whether it's a positive declaration or a negative declaration. And we can review that issue on traffic as well as others at the time.
With that, I'd like to know if it's possible to have our traffic consultant or the applicant do a traffic study of car counts in those intersections, just to see how busy that thoroughfare is with the amount of cars that are passing through there again, on the caution of, on the worry of pedestrian versus car traffic. And another concern would be noise. It is a residential neighborhood, a fairly populated residential neighborhood. I know there have been a number of noise complaints over on the Midville Lane shul, so I would not want to have anything imposed on the residents over here. So noise would be another concern of mine as we go forward.
Okay.
If you're going to look at the traffic, traffic is certainly an issue, but the, one of the big issues here might be the pedestrians. And this isn't, like I said, an unusual shul from my experience, in that it has a lot of parking. And I don't know how that'll change the dynamics of pedestrians walking versus parking. It depends on its proximity to the homes where the people will come from. And if they're going to walk, that's, that neighborhood is not really walker-friendly, if you will, on the streets there, especially if there's some snow around. So you might want to get an opinion on pedestrian in part of that traffic review.
I would just also like to note that the congregants live in Country Hollow now. They're, they're there now, so it's not, it's not as though they, they don't exist per se.
Well, I mean, you're not proposing that there be a condition in the resolution saying that you have to live there in order to?
No, what I'm saying is.
Okay, but as long as you're not, you're not willing to, I wouldn't think you would.
No.
But since you're not willing to limit it to that, then it's not a proper statement to say that that's where they are. Anybody can come from anywhere in order to visit this.
But we've already, we've already proven, we've already said in our narrative that this is for the local residents of this.
What I'm saying, then, is that if you don't want that study to be larger than the.
And it's made out to be something larger.
Just, John, just.
I know, I'm just.
Just let him finish, okay?
If the applicant does not want a study of the larger area of those people, then in order to avoid that, you're going to have to agree, the applicant will have to agree to a condition, like we do with many, many other applications, that you're saying, don't study all that because we're not doing it. Correspondingly, there's a restriction in the resolution, a condition, saying this is only what's being approved for, that this use, because you want it limited to that so that the other isn't studied. So you can't have it to say that anybody can come there, we don't want that restricted, but only study the fact that only people in the area are going to go there. You just can't have it both ways.
Because.
So I think you need to talk.
I realize your point, but.
You need to talk to the applicant and see what they're willing to do.
Being that this is going to be a full-time shul use, you may have family that comes over from a different section of Woodbury, or from another, from Monroe, or from WP3, so it's not just the neighborhood. This is what, you know, you may have other visitors come in.
That's what you're struggling with, but they really, the congregants really stay to their congregation. They don't, they won't travel to another one.
Or you can have family members that don't live in Country Hollow, Country Crossing.
I heard you say.
Yeah, so there might be, it could be visitors or family members. That's, now with the car counts, you said that.
Yes.
Is there a way to do a simple, have the applicant do a simple on, around the pie shape where the two stop signs are, you know, those, the boxes that go across the road? Is there something simple that we can do with that, or someone sits there and takes counts? Do we ask our consultant to do that, or do we ask?
Well, normally, the applicant does it, but I think in this particular case, you wouldn't have to take counts outside the hours of operation. I mean, basically, I don't know when the shul's going to, the shul mikvah is going to be open.
It's morning and night.
I'm sorry?
You got a morning segment, and then you have a night segment.
Okay. Well, you'd have to at least pick, get those areas, and get counts in those areas, but you wouldn't have, you know, do it in times when you're not functioning. But to your point before, if, if it's local people that are going to use this, right from the community there, then I think the pedestrian walking study would be important because there's going to be a lot of people that will want to walk. You're providing a large, fairly large parking lot, which would indicate that people will come perhaps from exterior, but if they come from WP3, I don't think they'd walk. I think they'd probably drive. It's a pretty long way. So anyway, I think, to Chris's point, I think it's important to look at.
Because it's currently being used now. We all know that.
Yes.
It's being used now. It's not, the intent, intensity is going to grow, from what I'm understanding, because you're changing a single-family home into a shul with a basement and a, and a second floor, well, a first floor. So the intensity can possibly grow from what it is now, because I'm not sure if the family's still living there while it's still being, I don't know what the dynamics are right now.
Yeah, I don't either.
So, you know what I'm saying? So the intensity can and will more than likely change, and that's what we have to be aware of. Anything else?
Traffic and noise are high concerns right now.
Yeah, and being with the noise, being that this is going to be, we don't know, like you said, there's a morning and a PM. Is it going to be like from 9:00 to 9:00, 9:00 to 11:00? Are there going to be parties there? This is what we're talking about with noise, is that, or gatherings, or family gathering, or, I don't know what you, with the noise.
If you, if you speak to the police department, the, the noise complaints have been outside of the hours of operation that were approved for Midville Lane, so that I'm concerned. This is a, Midville Lane was a small community shul, that one block. This is a much larger congregation, larger people, larger parties, more noise. Also, it's a bigger neighborhood, there's more people that live there. So I think we have to look out for all the residents that live up there, you know, that So I think we have to look out for all the residents that live up there, you know, that their, their lives aren't impacted adversely either, right? It's just fair for everybody.
Okay. And if, I'll talk to you later about Milville.
Okay.
Maria?
Yes, sir.
Given the board's concerns, you certainly, you know, for instance, your next step in SEAC after you assume lead agency is to make a determination of significance, okay? And that would be either a negative declaration, typically either a negative declaration or a positive declaration. There is, as you do from time to time, this third alternative that's not specifically set forth in the SEAC regulations, but recognized by the courts initially and by the DEC and their guidance books, of what they call an expanded Part Three of the EAF. So that is basically, well, we think that there may be a significant impact, but we're going to give the applicant the opportunity to go ahead and weigh in, and by studies or others, other determinations, giving us other information, before we make that determination of significance, to try to convince you that in fact, there is no significant adverse environmental impact. And if one of those is traffic, typically what you do is you ask the applicant to go ahead and provide you with a traffic analysis to show that it will not be a significant adverse environmental impact. And then you'd have your planning board consultant, traffic consultant, review that and give you an opinion. So if that's what you want, I think you ought to ask them to do that.
That's not a problem. All right. Rich, thoughts, concerns, questions, before we move on?
Just a question for Dennis on your page three, site plan, wastewater disposal.
Dennis's memo?
Yeah. Obviously, there's a potential for 72 seats. And this is not a weekend thing, this could be, he said six days a week? I'm just questioning, it says 42 seats at three gallons, 30 seats at 13. Why, why is that?
Those are their numbers, there's different activities, I guess.
Shouldn't it be the other way around?
No, because there's, there's the component, there's the children and the women are less use. They use the facility less, they only come for services, whereas the men use the facility more, and they use the mikvah. So the men's usage goes up. So that's why you'll see women and children will be at roughly three gallons per day, and the men would be at 13.
Not saying whether the numbers are right or wrong.
But that's okay.
This is consistent, though, with previous shuls that we've had, in terms of differential numbers for the occupants.
Because the, the women only come really on the weekend, so their usage is lower.
Oh, so it's not 72 a day?
No, no.
It's?
It's, it's hard for me to explain. It's basically during the week.
Yeah.
It's mainly the men.
Okay.
And then on the weekend, you'll get the men, women, and children.
Okay.
And there's two separate mikvahs, one for the men, one for the women?
Yes.
There are two separate ones, okay.
Okay, and then the last sentence says, prior to acting on this site plan, the comments from the sewer administrator should be considered. When, when is that coming?
We can ask Dennis to have-
We have to, we gotta send it to him and ask him. I mean, there's, there's a sewer, there's sanitary sewer in the area.
Yes.
And I think, you're looking for a waiver, or you're looking, no, you're looking for a connection?
Yep. Where the house is existing connection.
Right. So we should get the comments from him on any connection area. I know that they've had some issues in the operations of the system, just wanna make sure it's aligned.
Yeah, that, that was my next question. 'Cause it was a single-family house, and now it's-
At this flow rate, it wouldn't make much of a difference. This is higher than a single-family, but not that much higher. Depends on the number of occupants too. Some of the families up there are fairly large, and so, you know, you would get, you might get this kind of flow. Typical household, our normal design for a household, three, four bedrooms, might be around 375, 400 gallons per day as a design, usually comes in less. This one's 516. This may be inaccurate if it's based on-
Even on a weekend, when you have, you said a max of 72, potentially on the weekend?
Yeah, that's what the 516 is based on.
That, that's, that's the calculation for a weekend?
That's the calculation for this particular use. In, in households that have washing machines and other things and other types of uses, fine. This is a particular use, like a, like a theater or something. It has a separate use category, and people use the facilities and use, and discharge wastewater in an amounts that are, that are different perhaps than a single-family house.
Okay.
And this is where they've calculated. I asked them for additional details on it, they'll have to provide that.
Okay. I'm good.
I'm gonna just bounce back to mikvahs. I know it's supposed to be fresh rainwater, that, that's how they collect the water for the mikvahs.
Correct.
They, when they change it out, does the water ever get changed? I can't, where's that water gonna go into the sewer system, or is it gonna go naturally back out into like a rain garden or something outside? That's something to consider also.
Yeah, so prior shuls that do this, they basically change it out, for a shul this size, probably twice a year. Now, the shul is, is filled with natural rainwater, and when it's, and then it's filtered, so it's, it's like a pool. And so every six months, they will drain that to clean it, do maintenance, whatever else, and then it will get refilled over time with the rainwater.
But when it drains-
Because there's a storage pool that will refill it, that's there.
But when it drains, it's gonna go into the sewer system?
Could either go sewer, or it could go, you know, out over land, like you would flush a pool.
Okay. That's something to take, keep in mind also with the sewer administrator to keep in view.
Is it, is it regulated by the health department or not? I think we talked about this before, no?
No, it's not. And if it were to drain out like a pool from the outside, inside to outside, how many gallons of, when we get, you know, as you go through the interior architects, how many gallons does each one hold, the men and the women's, or, I know it's in here somewhere.
Yeah, it's in here somewhere.
I'm not gonna hold you too tight, but when we come back.
Yeah, I'm thinking, I'll get it, I'll get it.
Yeah, when you come, just so we have a better idea of what, what we're thinking about with water being drained out, whether it's gonna be through the sewer system or naturally into the, some type of a rain gar, you know what I mean by a rain garden or something?
Did we do that Milville Lane, where they have to drain it into a-
I forgot what we did, what with Milville.
Yeah, Milville.
All right. Anybody else have any thoughts, concerns, or questions for John, 'cause he's got some work to do? Come back to us. We're good?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Before we leave, I'm gonna get to that right. First of all, I wanna make a, I wanna offer a motion, is it intent, or are we assuming lead agency?
Assuming lead agency.
I'd like to offer a motion that we assume lead agency on this application. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion from the board? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Back in October 17, we declared this an unlisted action. Do we have to, so we're changing, if we change that to a positive declaration, or do we leave this unlisted?
It's unlisted.
It's, that's a changing. Okay. So do we wanna make a motion that this is a positive declaration, which then we're gonna go into asking for a traffic study? Is that how, or is it backwards?
No. If you would say that it's a positive declaration, you then would go in and ask for an environmental impact statement.
Okay.
Short of that, if you wanna postpone making a determination of significance, you're not ready to say it's a negative declaration, that there's no significant adverse environmental impacts. But you wanna give the applicant an opportunity so that you don't have to go into an environmental impact statement, you have with other applicants as well, allow them to come back with some information to better inform your determination, or they would add some conditions on what they're doing, so that you could be satisfied that with those mitigations of any potential significant environmental impacts, that now would be no significant environmental impacts because of the mitigation. So you wouldn't make a determination of significance now, you'd give them an opportunity to present a traffic study to you and anything else that you wanted, so that you could then make your determination of significance at a later date.
Board members, you okay with that?
Yes.
Let's decide. What do we want with a, do we want a traffic study? And limited, what do we want with it?
I would like to see both the pedestrian and car count in that area. Or the normal, whatever the congregation would deem the normal hours of operation. 'Cause I know on high holidays, the traffic would probably be higher, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
If I could suggest, if, if you're gonna have John Collins review this, it might be appropriate to tell John Collins about the use, about your concerns, about the pedestrian and traffic use here, and whether it would create an impact, and allow John to work with the applicant to develop a scope or to prevent, present one to you in consultation with the applicant. That way you, make sure you cover everything and they don't have to keep coming back.
Okay. Will you reach out to John and, or will you reach out to John Collins?
So the village is gonna use, John?
John's gonna review it, right?
Excuse me?
John's gonna review it, right?
Yeah, John Collins would be there.
John Collins, Mazer.
Mazer?
Yes.
He's a Mazer engineer, yeah, that's right.
Anything else with the traffic?
Not with traffic, no.
Okay. Also, with that being said, I just wrote this down, but I put, what else do we want them to look at? Do we wanna look at the-
I wanna look at noise, but I don't know how you would do that. I know there's no bells or anything like that, that would be with traditional.
Yeah, I don't, uh-
But I know during certain holidays, there are celebrations that take place and-
Correct, I just don't know how we would modify that.
Yeah, 'cause, 'cause isn't, like, right now, is it tomorrow? Is, is it today, or it starts, it starts today and it goes for how long?
Tomorrow.
Huh?
Today, tomorrow.
Today and tomorrow, so it's only two days, so we, and I know that's the more lively or one, it's a happier.
Correct.
It's something, I don't know how we look at it, if you'll even-
Maybe if, you can get us a list of like holidays that are, I don't know them all. I know there's, there's several.
I think it's gonna be problematic to go ahead and try to figure out a way, one, to measure, and two, to regulate some noise based upon the religious use, right? I think it's probably more in the purview of whether or not they're violating the noise ordinance on any of these, and if they believe they need to because of religious use, that would have to be an issue that's battled out with Gary and potentially the courts after that, if, if there's, there isn't some waiver given by Gary with respect to enforcement. But I, I really don't think that it raises to the level, rises to the level, rather, of a significant adverse environmental impact as the SEAC regulations envision it.
In regards to the applicant to looking at, do we want them to look at the ESO part of it? We're gonna have Dennis do that?
Yeah, I'll, I'll refer to the ESOs.